Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to call the meeting of the Board of Regents of Delmar College District to order at 1:00 PM on Tuesday, September 14th. We are in our new meeting location at the Center for Economic Development at the corner of Staples and Costores. For those who've not been here before, we encourage folks to come visit us once again. I'm going to call roll so we can establish a quorum. Regent Adami.
Here.
Regent Avery.
Here.
Regent Bennett.
Here.
Regent Garza.
Here.
Regent Hutchison.
Here.
Regent Villarreal.
Here.
And I'm Carol Scott. We have a quorum and can conduct business. Regents Kelly and Turner were not able to join us today. I'm going to ask Dr. Villarreal to please lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would you all please join us in reading the Delmar College Vision Statement? "Delmar College will be the premier choice for life-changing educational opportunities provided by responsive, innovative faculty and staff who empower students to improve local and global communities." Thank you. Delmar College is streaming our meeting live audio and video from this official board meeting on the college's website in real time, with the exception of portions of the meeting considered closed session by statute. Somehow, I can't read that well today. I apologize for that. We are going to remind people that we are attempting as best possible to remain COVID-safe protocols with social distance and wearing your masks if you are not speaking or actively eating or drinking, and so we want to encourage you to help us keep everyone safe and healthy during this continued pandemic. We do have an opportunity at the start of this meeting, and we've not done this for, gosh, several meetings. It feels like a year and a half. We haven't done this in any significant way. We are going to start our meeting with recognitions, and so we do have a number of faculty and staff recognitions to come before us today. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over. Our first one, I'm going to ask Dr. Eskamia to introduce, and then we'll turn it over to Dr. Halcom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regents, guests, friends of faculty and staff, this is a unique opportunity that happens once a year or two. Go ahead, Dr. John, go ahead and come up to the microphone as I'm leading up to it to celebrate a recognition, and several recognitions here actually that are just bittersweet in so many ways. The first of which that we're going to talk about is the Eileen Creighton Award for Teaching Excellence here at the college, and it's just that. I mean, it's at the heart of everything that we do and support and in the way of the classroom interaction with our students. And so that opportunity to come and celebrate that today frankly was a big reason why I pushed yesterday so hard for this meeting. This is a crazy meeting, everyone, to put together, given the weekend situation with the storm and everything else, not to mention our logistical challenges. Anyway, that being said, anytime we can celebrate excellence at the college in the classroom, it's a deep honor. It's a deep honor, and I feel it on so many different levels. As a former student at Delmar College and all the faculty that changed my lives and that all the faculty have changed for the generations, going back to 1966, some of them, and other things, it's been a, it's just a tremendous honor to have this moment, to share and really kick off again another trip around the sun, another year, another academic year kicking off. So we're doing it right. Celebrating faculty and staff is just a beautiful thing. That being said, Dr. John de Halcom will lead us into the first few of these recognitions.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Benita to come forward while I embarrass you, because she's wearing her nice medal and.
I feel like a rat's sock.
So Benita Flores Munoz, Program Director and Professor of Child Development, Early Childhood, is a 2021 Creighton Award recipient. She is the 20th faculty member to receive this prestigious award. The highly coveted Dr. Eileen Creighton Award for Teaching Excellence represents the late educator's legacy as a master teacher and serves as a benchmark faculty must emulate to receive the honor. Benita's portfolio highlighted over 15 years of her dedication to teaching at Delmar College. Her commitment to guiding students is invaluable. Former students noted her devotion towards preparing them for careers in the early childhood, child development field. Her supporters say that she lives up to the standards required to receive the Creighton Award, whether she's teaching students in the classroom or online or developing initiatives and building enthusiasm through community connections and interaction. As one of her key accomplishments, Benita led the college's Child Development, Early Childhood Program to national accreditation by the National Association for the Education of Young Children. She now serves on that commission on the accreditation of early childhood higher education programs. In addition to her role at the college as program director, she also serves as a gender equity coordinator for the Carl D. Perkins Grant to recruit non-traditional students into career and technical education programs. Benita is also a certified advisor with Project Senda. Please join me and congratulate Benita for receiving this prestigious award.
Gosh, I sound pretty amazing. Thank you, Dr. Halcom, Dr. Eskamia, Board of Regents. I'm so grateful and I'm honored and humbled to be the recipient of this award. It's so big and very meaningful to any educator who would be honored with it, but very meaningful to me because it comes from my peers. I was nominated by my chairperson, Dr. Judy Phillips, who is here, of course, because she's always got my back. And when I got the nomination letter, just, you know, the invitation to be nominated for this award, that was a big win for me, to read the words from Dr. Phillips and how she saw me as a teacher of excellence and the work that I've done for the program just really touched my heart. But this process goes beyond that because it also was supported with nomination letters from my peers and from faculty and staff across the college, and even more than that, my students. So several of my students wrote letters of support, and I told Judy that even if I didn't win this, if I wasn't selected, I had already won when I read those letters, and it's such a validation, especially given the last year and a half that we've been through and all of us in the way that we had to switch gears and keep going, and we all rose to that challenge. I feel like I won the lottery because I got this beautiful award. I've got this great medal. I got a nice little allowance from the foundation, but I also got all those wonderful letters of support, and I am honored. Thank you so much.
On behalf of the Board of Regents, we know the honor that this is, one, having been named after Dr. Creighton, but also each year to have your students and your colleagues recognize you for this achievement. We know this is the pinnacle for many of our faculty and staff, and so we just congratulate you and thank you for your continued work in the Early Childhood Program. My mother was an early childhood teacher, and so I've got a special place in my heart for those that work with those wonderful little ones. Any other Regents would like to make any comments? Not congratulations again.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Eskamia will do our next recognition.
This next recognition is as much about recognizing excellence and expertise in the area, in the particular field, as it is about good old-fashioned, hard work. And so that being said, I'd like to call Mr. Raul Garcia, just come up to the podium real quick. Mr. Garcia, as you know, is our Vice President and CFO. He's been appointed to Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board's Community and Technical College Formula Advisory Committee. And having been a part of that group myself some years ago, I can't think of a better person, much better than this person frankly, to take on the very micro-level work that's necessary to understanding our finance structures. And so Mr. Garcia has been with us several years now after joining us from the great state of Illinois and the Chicagoland area, and these are no small matters because now on a regular basis, I'm hearing Mr. Raul Garcia's name in conversations at the Association of Community Colleges and one more time, Delmar College, amongst other conversations over there. But that being said, congratulations, Mr. Garcia. It is work. You enjoy work, like not a lot of other people I know, but this is an important recognition. Do you have anything you want to add, Mr. Garcia?
Well, I'm speechless, but, you know, I have to say, it's definitely going to be a lot of work, a lot of technical understanding of our finances, and, you know, where I'm at today, I attribute it to the people that I surround myself with, surrounded by very talented, smart individuals, which makes me even better than what I bring to the table. So unfortunately, I can't bring this team with me to this committee, but I'm definitely going to leverage their understanding, their knowledge to move you, our industry and our organization forward.
This work will be felt statewide, ladies and gentlemen, and it'll have an impact. And so it's a tremendous responsibility. Again, the financial minds and the person behind all of this opportunity that is Mr. Garcia, we're very proud of you. We're proud of your talents and so forth, and go give him heck up there in Austin, man.
Great. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Garcia.
Very much.
Regents, this committee informs the legislature on our formula funding models, including our success points, performance-based funding, as well as our contact hour funding. So indeed, it is going to be a lot of detail work, but very important work because this feeds directly into those funding models and impacts us all. So congratulations and thank you, Mr. Garcia, for taking on the additional responsibility. Next, I'm going to call up Ms. Patricia Benavides Dominguez. Oh, sorry, Cheryl Sanders is going to do our next recognition.
I'd like to call up Mr. Joseph Ruiz. Joseph is our Director of Financial Aid, and he has been selected to participate in the Coordinating Board's Financial Aid Advisory Committee. This is a three-year term commitment. The purpose of the Advisory Committee is to make recommendations regarding the development, the implementation, and evaluation of state financial aid programs for college students. So this is another one of those state-level appointments that we are so proud of.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. Would you like to say anything?
Just like to thank the Delmar College for their support and giving me the opportunities to be able to serve on these types of committees. It's a great honor and definitely one that I will represent Delmar College with the utmost recognition because definitely Delmar College, Board of Regents, Dr. Eskamia, and everyone has given me the opportunity to serve students. So definitely, I'm grateful for the chance and look forward to rolling up my sleeves and working at the state level. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joseph.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joseph. The second person I'd like to recognize couldn't be here today. He was feeling ill, but I'd still like to recognize Mr. David Barrera. He's the Director of Project Senda here at Delmar, which is our Title V grant. He's been selected to serve on the Texas Association of Tocantos in Higher Education, otherwise known as TACE. He's been on their State Board, and this is a two-year term. The purpose of the TACE State Board is to provide educational advocacy regarding educational needs and issues in higher education. So just like to recognize him in his absence. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call up Ms. Lenora Keys for our final recognition of the day.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to ask Kiwantha Denson to step forward. First, I'd like to share a little brief history of Kiwantha and why she's being recognized today. Kiwantha started with us in 2012 and has worked her way up through the corporate services area, and I think one of the biggest areas of her recognition regarding her work was representing Delmar College as the project manager on the industrial side of Gulf Coast Growth Ventures, where she and her team were able to deliver safety and leadership training to multiple industrial leaders throughout this entire area as they built that fabulous $9 billion facility. So Kiwantha's work with business and industry has gone on for many years, and because of her knowledge within higher education, being here at Delmar College since 2012, and directly working with business and industry, she was nominated by Mayor Guajardo to represent the City of Corpus Christi in their position on the Workforce Solutions Board for the Texas Workforce Commission. And Kiwantha has now been certified by the Texas Workforce Commission to serve on the local workforce board, and so she is also representing Delmar College in that capacity in all of higher education. And so we're very proud today of Kiwantha Denson and her many accomplishments within the field of workforce and higher education. So thank you, Kiwantha. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Lenora, for the kind words. It would be highly unlikely for me to not say something, so I think everyone's expecting that, but good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair, Board of Regents, Dr. Eskamia, and General Counsel for the opportunity to be recognized today. It's an honor to be appointed and to serve on the Texas Local Workforce Development Board. This is a commitment to ensuring our workforce and communities are afforded the best training solutions and educational programs to create opportunity and sustain economic prosperity. A special thank you to City Corpus Christi Mayor Guajardo and Workforce Solutions Coastal Bend CEO Ken Trevino for recognizing my professional skills and work ethic and having faith in my ability to contribute to the community, the workforce, and the Workforce Solutions Board. Another special thank you to Delmar College Executive Team and, of course, my mentor here, Ms. Lenora Keys. I cannot serve in this capacity without your endorsement. It truly means a lot. Again, as Lenora mentioned, you know, being on that project at Gulf Coast Growth Ventures, we had a lot of autonomy, and it takes a lot of, you had to really, really, really have faith in someone's ability to maintain professionalism and to deliver on a project of such. So again, I thank you for that, and I will certainly do my best to represent Delmar College and post-secondary education in this capacity. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Kiwantha. Congratulations.
Anything else?
Congratulations to everyone, and so grateful to be able to do these recognitions once again. Do we have anyone here for public comment, for general public comment? Seeing none, we will move on then to our Student Success Report. Dr. John de Halcom will give us information on our radiologic technology program. Did I say that correctly?
Yes. Madam Chair, Regents, and Dr. Eskamia, we're very proud of our radio, oops, we've got to get it up here, don't we? Okay, just a minute. All right. Let's see here. There we go. No? Okay, I don't see the graph. Okay, so we're proud of our radiology technology students and the faculty who teach them. As can be seen in this table, our pass rates for the AART, American Registry of Radiology Technologists, is very high. Of course, it's not up here just yet. There we go, Zach. Thank you. To clarify the numbers that are in here, the number of majors, you may say, well, there's 18 graduates, 246 majors for 2016, 2018. Just to clarify, the number of majors are those that declared the major but haven't necessarily been accepted into the program. This is a selective admission program. I just wanted to make sure that you understood that, and a lot of the majors, declared majors, are currently taking prerequisites such as anatomy and physiology. Most important, though, than just the pass rate that you see here for the AART exam, is the number of students who get jobs. And so it's been reported to me by the department that there is 100% job placement rate. So that's a tremendous success. So as soon as they finish the degree, they take the test, they're getting jobs, and that is critical, that they're getting 100% job placement. Tremendous. But anyway, just a short blip of our tremendous success in the radiologic technology program, and I just want to thank you for letting us share this with you today. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Halcom? Thank you very much. We will now move on to our college president's report. Dr. Eskamia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, good afternoon, everyone. Since COVID began, every month, I've brought a report of some sort to the Board than in years prior. Today, as we kick off the fall semester, it's no different. I want everyone to know that the college remains under the Return to Campus Phase Three conditions with all campuses open to students and exposure in positive cases. Details on the processes, on the process, on the process are posted on the college's website and have been communicated to all students and employees, as you would expect. What it also means is key health and safety protocols that have been included or maintained, such as social distancing of six feet wherever possible, facial coverings or masks are strongly recommended in common areas, and COVID-19 vaccination is highly encouraged. Again, there are many other protocols that are being put in place, and this really speaks to a very situational approach coming into the fall because, as I've talked about in our workshop and in other opportunities, this fall was like no other and still very unlike our previous fall. The college is gearing up to launch a COVID-19 incentive program for both students and employees, where we expect to announce the details of the program over the next few weeks, incentivizing vaccinations. And this is a practice that's taking place across the country, and we're looking forward to that. We're finding it very effective in other parts of the country, and stay tuned, we'll bring that to you as soon as we can. Like everything else, new initiatives are not without their challenges. There's laws, there's rules, there's regulations and so forth, and we have to make sure we have all those in place before you move such an initiative, but stay tuned. Again, we're finding that the incentive program for vaccinations very effective, to be very effective across the country, and we look forward to implementing that. That being said, fall classes are currently proceeding as scheduled. However, course delivery methods may be modified if COVID-19 conditions change. It really speaks to the situational nature of this whole fall. We're just going in, and in different areas of the curriculum, we're handling things differently. We're giving maximum flexibility to our departments at the department level, for the faculty to work with their department chairs, deans, and chief academic officer to decide the best situation for them because there's, although there are many similarities with regards to instructional areas, there are many differences, there are many nuances. Plus, there's many different desires of the faculty as well. And so we're in instances where we're bringing in classrooms of lecture, types of setups and so forth, where we are allowing that faculty to decide how they will break up that instruction for that particular, either for their block of sections or that particular section. We're finding that a lot of more faculty are asking to come back to that classroom. You know, I've heard it myself. They've told me themselves that, you know, hey, I miss our students so badly. Look, I've got these protections, I've got these, I'm going to do things a certain way, and I'm going to get back in that classroom. And I'm hearing that from all aspects of the curriculum. So it's a, you know, the love for their profession and their students is really, really being demonstrated through their actions. So again, very situational, things are very different across the college. I'm very proud of our leadership, proud of the faculty and staff who are here really taking on a very onerous task with regard to reacting to COVID this fall. And we are going to, again, we're taking it day by day, but just know that we are making plans for every month and every semester as it comes, and we're, again, we are prepared for conditions to change at all times. Switching gears, today is my privilege and honor to, and I feel my deep responsibility to talk about a move that we're going to be making here at the college to stand up and formalize an Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Committee, otherwise known as an EDI Committee. They call it different things across the country, and what, ladies and gentlemen, we have not forgotten by any means the civil unrest that was upon, that besieged this country frankly about 18 months ago and still continues, especially 18 months ago, and some say, if you read, continues throughout this country. It's an important step that we feel that we need to come together to make sure that the things that are going on here at the college in all aspects are being addressed and including those very, very difficult yet critical situations as it relates to equity, diversity, and inclusion here at Delmar College. I'm going to ask our very own General Counsel and Dr. Villarreal and others to put together a committee with chairs and so forth to stand up a formal process so that that discussion is not forgotten by any means, that it is strengthened, magnified, and applied to everything we do here at Delmar College. This is my, pardon my casualness, but this is my commercial for that officially. We've been working on this and putting this back on the shelf for too long now. I own that, telling the whole college, I own that. It's just been an extraordinary time. I want to say, right before the spring break of 2020, Augie and I had our, you know, we had our sleeves rolled up and we were getting ready to roll things out, and we, I allowed the momentum of everything that's going on to slow us down. That is no longer going to be the case, and we are done with that. So heads up, FYI, I look forward to these conversations, and I look forward to bringing them back to the Board of Regents for discussions on how we can move ahead with that topic and, more importantly, the representation of the college to come together and put together a body of work that'll improve the lives of everyone here at Delmar College and the community. So thank you for that opportunity. That means a lot to me. Finally, SACC COC, little update here. It never stops. You know, here we are coming in off the decennial report, which is a sterling report that we received for our 10-year accreditation and those wonderful things, but I just wanted to let you know that it really, really never stops. And so as such, there's a couple of announcements that I wanted to make. The SACC COC substantive change on-site visit for the new Bachelor of Science in Nursing Program will take place virtually November 15th through the 18th. Okay? The in-person component of the visit to review federal standards, which is a requirement of the federal government and through SACC, will happen, and the review of our off-campus instructional sites, excuse me, hang on one second. Okay, the in-person component of the site review, pardon me, the in-person component of the visit will be delayed until 2022, probably spring. So they'll do the off-site review virtually November fifteenth. Second part to be done face-to-face, which is a federal requirement, will happen in the spring of 2022. SACC COC is giving institutions the options, it's not just you, Madam Chair, today.
It's rubbing off, sorry.
Is giving institutions the option to delay required in-person visits until 2022. We're taking them up on that for safety protocols and the like, and, because we want to make sure and do it right. So just a heads up, again, that all being focused on the BSN program is still moving ahead. Multiple balls in the air in terms of reaffirmation of accreditation, and I just wanted to make sure you all heard that. I'm glad to answer any questions regarding the topics or anything else you all may have that I've offered this morning.
Some questions for Dr. Eskimia? If not, we'll move on to Regent reports. Regents, I wanted you to be informed that we received a letter from the chief appraiser, Ronnie Canales, that the, our appointment to the appraisal district board, Mr. Amanda Chapa, his term is expiring in December of this year. They have asked for us to put that on our agenda for appointment. Mr. Chapa is interested in serving another term. However, we do allow anyone to apply for that position. It's going to be on our November agenda for action, so we'll give folks a couple of months, including Mr. Chapa, to express his interest in being reappointed. There are some specific requirements, so if you are, if someone is interested in applying for that position, please contact our president or our general counsel, and they can give you reference to these specific requirements to serve on the appraisal district board. They did ask that we make that appointment prior to November fifteenth so that they might onboard that individual. So that's, yes, do you have a question?
Quick question. Are there term limits for that board?
I do not think there are.
And, okay.
And he has been our representative for two terms, so he is completing his second term as our representative on the appraisal district board. Good question, thank you. Any other questions? Just wanted to make that, make you all aware of that and make that announcement officially as well. We will now move on to our staff reports, and our first one is regarding the write-offs of account receivables. Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Afternoon, Madam Chair, Mr. President, members of the board. In accordance with the college's write-off and default board policy, delinquent accounts are written off after the colleges, after the college has made multiple collection attempts. In the spirit of transparency, we are reporting the college's 2021 student receivable write-off valued at $287,122. So let me begin with a backdrop of our collection rate relative to twelve community colleges, including all but two colleges within our peer group. Based on fiscal years, 2020 audited financial statement, Delmar's collection rate is 99.69, which is also the highest relative to our sample of twelve colleges. Our high collection rate is attributed to our collection practices that include student billing, sending collection letters, phone calls, and placing student account holes. The collection rate for the group ranges from 95.3% to Delmar's best collection rate at 99.7%. We suspect this trend will continue in our path forward. This year's write-off valued at $287,122 has been delinquent for the period from fall of 2017 through summer of 2018. I will also point out, students who received a financial aid refund before dropping the classes makes up 77% of this receivable valued at $222,703. This is the group that is difficult to collect from because they are our students with most financial need. So as the old saying goes, you can squeeze, you cannot squeeze blood from a turnip, so, but we will do our best. However, the student's account will remain in place so that students do not have access to their academic records unless the balance is paid in full. If there are no questions, Madam Chair, Mr. President, members of the board, this concludes my report.
Any questions for Mr. Garcia? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll ask Ms. McDonald to give us a report on the junior college audit of safety and security for our 2018-21 audit cycle.
Thank you. I would like to also thank our, what I call our J-Car team, which is comprised of myself, John Strivos, Lauren White, and Chris Tweedle. The Texas Education Code requires junior college districts to report at least once every three years to the governing body of the institution the results of their safety and security audit, or it's a self-assessment, known as the junior college audit report, or we call it the J-Car. This assessment is also reported to the Texas School Safety Center, and it covers the period of September 1st of 2018 through August 31st of 2021. The J-Car assessment is comprised of a series of questions pertaining to the college district's safety and security. Some elements reviewed during this self-assessment were interior of facilities, exterior of facilities, safety and security personnel utilization, safe work and learning environments, data, including the clearly data that we report to the Department of Education, college policies, and emergency plan and procedures. I am very pleased to report to the board that this assessment overall is satisfactory. This report today will provide a record confirming that the college has timely reported the J-Car results to the governing body. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. McDonald? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will now hear an update on some ideas around art and sculpture and treatments for our campuses. Mr. Strivos, I think they're gonna pull it up for you.
Yes, ma'am. This is about aesthetics for our campuses and all of our locations. I'm gonna use a generic term, public art, not that I'm advocating that, but I think some of you may be familiar with that term, public art. I'm borrowing a definition from Wikipedia, that public art is the art in any media whose form, function, and meaning are created by the general public through a public process. It is a specific art genre with its own professional and critical discourse. Public art is visually and physically accessible to the public. It is installed or staged in public space or the public realm. Public art seeks to embody public or universal concepts rather than commercial partisan or personal concepts or interests. Notably, public art is also the direct or indirect product of a public process of creation, procurement, and/or maintenance. In our particular case, last month, you approved the college-wide rebranding options, and so now is the right time and the right place to begin an aesthetic program to enhance all of our colleges, our locations, the campuses, and just the learning environment. Oso Creek, Ranu Campus, we have multiple locations. Heritage Campus, we have multiple locations, including building renovations. Windward Campus, again, we have building renovations, a lot of projects, a lot of spaces and places where we can incorporate this artwork. Some of project goals, to develop guidelines for art and sculpture locations, identify building interior locations, exterior locations, prepare the construction documents. It's easy enough, you can look around here and say, wait, there was a seal on the wall there. And the first question that came back was, well, how big is it and how much did it weigh? And it takes work. You can't just go hang it on the wall. Some of you may have seen those commercials where they hung stuff on the wall, and it turns out the wall wasn't heavy for it, the wall collapses, the roof collapses, everything collapses. So it's not just a matter of go get the artwork and stick it somewhere. Some of it may require electricity, it may require data, and depending on where it's located, a variety of other parts of it. So it's not just get the artwork, there's the parts that go with it, and then actually install it and approve it. We have consultants already on contract through indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity, Turner Ramirez, Richter, Janak, Ardua, who was formerly LNV, Fluger, and WKMC, and then various specialized subconsultants that will identify as we go through the projects. And so I've kind of take a swag at a schedule, you know, this first quarter, and this is 2021, this is quarter four, so these are calendar quarters, not semester quarters. So the last part of this year, start to develop the guidelines, look at locations, and ideally start installing the artwork, tying in with the projects, that they fit in with the renovation and construction projects, so it becomes part of that overall design and construction process. And so locations that are already constructed, then we can just start moving forward with those as we identify the artwork. And here's a cut at a budget, and so this is not asking any kind of authorization or approval. You can say that's a lot of money, and it is, but when we start talking about paying consultants by the hour to develop different documents and then preparing them and identifying locations, and so this is kind of a starting place, and what we do is bring back to the board the different locations, where we are on the expenditures. Funding sources will be the 2014 bond for those 2014 bond projects, the 2016 bond for the Oso Creek projects. And this is over a couple of years. And then I have some other supplemental information, just for your references. If any of you are familiar with public art, that is not, there's a lot of people who are doing this, and here's just some reference information from some local cities who are doing some of that. And you've got some other information about some of the locations that have been specifically identified. We've been working on the campus edge project, as well as some locations that had been identified by the consultants for the south campus. Questions, comments?
Dr. Eskimia, you want to start with some comments?
Yes, I have some booklets, if you can pass them around. That's some examples of some things that I've been involved in, the brown one notably of, I've had this notebook here waiting for these projects since 2008. This particular one, the brown one, I don't know much about history. Those are some examples of the, of wall graphics and other types of enhancements, aesthetic enhancements that I've been a part of. They're critical. Our walls are bare, bare, bare. They're beautiful walls, they're beautiful glass cases, and there's all kinds of opportunities with existing art that are just put away right now, that need to be curated and/or presented and presented in the various ways, in the various hallways and so forth. If, as you all, most of you all have been to, in the, in the hallways of the general academic building, and you see those big, stark, long, muted colored hallways, those present beautiful opportunities, not all of them, beautiful opportunities for presentation, to celebrate history and sociology, our local history of our geography, of our demography, of our flora and fauna, and all of these sorts of things in the various areas. And that's what colleges and universities have readily. And so we want to, we want to put together a plan and start putting up some color to do a lot of different things, and not, not just to light up those hallways aesthetically. But there's a learning aspect that comes from this. It's called ambient learning and so forth. When these halls and classrooms frankly have things represented on the walls that cover the subjects that I was talking about. Again, there's another bucket that exists of current artifacts and art that can be curated and put on display. There's even some LPs, some vinyl LPs that I just heard about the other day, that I think can be curated and harvested and even put, digitized and played at various, there's so many opportunities. But that being said, we're putting before you some examples, and I've worked with the gentleman who we're hoping to get his attention to come down here, who specializes in this area and is excited to take part in it. Again, there are others as well. There are groupings of faculty out there who are already chomping at the bit, pardon my term there, that are really excited about displaying art already in the glass cases and so forth. And so it needs to be coordinated, it needs to be coordinated and done well, done correctly, and we look forward to that opportunity again. When we were taking the tour of the Oso Creek campus the other day, and you look down, a long, of course, right now they're just primed white walls, even, but even with their accent walls, colors coming, there are things to be projected, both to our students and to our community. One other piece in there, you can see in the booklets and so forth, that don't have to cost a lot of money and that were already built into certain plans or things such as structural art and the like, we had some, some opportunities and some plans of doing that on West. Well, we intend to do that very, very cost-conscious, with a very cost-conscious kind of way, and there's, there's some really low-hanging fruit out there that we'll take, that we'll take on. Take a look at those books, that, those book, those booklets, again, that, one of those brown ones have been sitting in my, in my office for a very long time, and it's, it's time to dust it off and really advance the aesthetics of our, of our buildings. It's gonna be the icing on the cake. You talked about the Ensaldo Plaza today, and that kind of impact that it had on you, Dr. Viall, is again what the interior of the building needs to then, or buildings needs to have, in our opinion. This has been long overdue, but we're just bringing it back to you now, that we're well on our way with the construction aspects. Mr. Strivos, or a question?
I do have a question regarding the guidelines, and will there be an opportunity for the board to see those in draft form? So if there, because if there's any input from the board, it should happen at the guideline level so that you all then have the ability to implement. So could we bring those back maybe at the November or December meeting when they're drafted so the board could, could see those in draft form? Is that appropriate?
Sure. Yes, that's appropriate.
That, all that work will be, that body of work will be done here in the next couple of months anyway, so it won't be, it should be, but no later than December, we can bring those back.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir.
In terms of budgeting, when we started these construction projects, was there any percentage or any amount of dollars set aside for public art?
I'll have to take that one since Mr. Strivos wasn't here, unless you've got some history that you've dug up. When you and I talked last, well, let me just go back. The discussions were earlier on of putting a percentage on the overall cost of each bond program, and we found those to be rather large and a lot of uncertainty when you're on that front end of the business. And we, what we said was, although it was Mr. Boggs who really promoted this, this concept and the importance of it, and what we talked about was a percentage and a half or so of the overall prices. Well, what we didn't know is what we didn't know, and we said, well, let's get these buildings stood up or well on their way and budgets established, as we have. There's still more to come, and we understand that these, these next projects that'll be hopefully awarded here in the next six months or so, will tell, time will tell on those. But for those that have already been stood up, set up and done, such as Gambi and West Campus and so forth, we said that, that once they were, that we would come back and do what we're doing today. So on a percentage-wise, a percent and a half of the overall bond numbers is not what we are looking at by any means.
But if we're considering guidelines going forward, would that not be something that we might want to consider, at least, you know, in future projects? I mean, again, we can discuss what we might want to spend on existing campuses, but in either remodeling or renovations, I believe that higher education institutions are a vehicle by which you expand young people's minds, and certainly, art is a conduit to expand people's appreciation and understanding.
Sure. And the other part, Regent Garza, is that we don't know, we don't know about possibilities, and we, what I mean by that is there are possibilities that we could approach the foundation and/or other donors, and we have, and because we know we have little buckets of resources there for statues and other things, so we're gonna have to open up those conversations. So there's lots of different things going on. What I'm trying to get to here and trying to establish is, look, wall graphics like we've done on the West Campus, that are, display the refineries and all those things that are already existing, those kinds of things, those are, I'm not even calling that art, per se. Those are aesthetics, though, but those are things that are already built in budgets and all these other sorts of things that we can move more readily on. But it, but, but, but there are still things that we've got to talk about and put out there and coordinate when it comes to commissioned, juried types of artwork and the like with standards and so forth. So, so we're talking apples, oranges, grapefruits, and grapes right now with regards to aesthetics. What we wanted to do is let you all know, we're gonna put a plan together, we're, we're working on that, and, you know, stay tuned. working on that, and, you know, stay tuned, so we can come back to you as quickly as possible. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, Dr. Escamilla, I'm real excited about this. Just two, two comments that really don't connect, but one, one comment is just to imagine the buildings without it, and then imagine the buildings with it, and, and with a strategically thought, thought-out plan as far as what that aesthetic looks like. And then the second aspect is just that, you know, when you tie it to the strategic plan, and you tie it to all the data that we heard about today, the different breakdowns of economic, what our students are exposed to, how many of our students have been to New York and gone to museums, or to Washington, or wherever, anything that we can bring to raise the level of the environment for our students, our staff, our administrators, as you walk through it, it raises the level of expectation and of learning. So I'm really excited about this, and I, I just can't imagine the buildings, the new buildings and even our older buildings without it. The difference of with it and without it is huge. So just two comments.
Thank you, Dr. Villarreal. You're referring to the term that, that I used, and it's called ambient learning, and anytime you can bring the Mona Lisa, you know, to, to a position, someplace on the college, or the, an electronic version of the Eiffel, a tour of the Eiffel Tower, and/or whatever, any sort of art, there's, there are opportunities to learn from. In that brown booklet that I passed around, what we actually did was we would, we would put up graphics on these classrooms, in these classrooms, and had historical information and so forth, and what we would do is at the beginning of a semester, we'd cover up the walls, okay, and do a pre-test of what the knowledge of what was on the wall. And the wall may have been the Star Spangled Banner, okay? Did you know the Star Spangled Banner prior to this? Well, no. Maybe 10% knew it, okay? And then you'd do a post-test, remove the wallpaper after, throughout the course of a, of a semester, and at the end, you would test for it, and you'd actually find statistical significance, as an example. So the ambient learning is, and that's getting real technical, because we were playing around with it and so forth, but yes, how many of our students don't have the opportunity to cross the bridge, or leave town, or go to Austin and see their capital, and all of these things? We live in such a historically rich, rich community, as I dare say, the, well, many states and, many areas in the state of Texas, I mean, I know Renato Ramirez is here, and Renato, wait till I get with you on this one, because all of the demographic history and genealogical stuff is, is really rich for opportunity here by posting. Anyway, stay tuned, Renato, but duly noted, ambient learning is our opportunity here.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to our pending business list that's been provided to you, I wanted to specifically call out a couple of things that we will have upcoming in our, some upcoming board meetings. One, on an annual basis, we look at the tax abatements that Delmar College has granted to area businesses, and we get a report on, on kind of how those are doing, and if there's any upcoming that we need to be concerned about, but it's, it's an annual review that the Economic Development Corporation comes to our board meetings and provides for us. The second one to call out for you, that we will have a HERF update in October, so we look forward to that conversation, and, and how staff is proposing to use those funds that have been, been coming through. We also have a redistricting report that will happen in October. Staff will lay out for us the, the timing for the board to make decisions, for to engage a consultant and get decisions made on the redrawing of our district boundaries for our regent districts. And then lastly, in November, we're looking at dates for a board retreat. I think Dr. Natalie Villarreal had contacted you all about a possible date in December, and we just found out in the last couple of days that that date conflicts with the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board Leadership Conference, which would be held at the same time, and several of our regions, our newer ones especially, might need to attend that Higher Education Coordinating Board Leadership Conference. So I think she's going to be getting back in touch with us about the alternative date and see if that might indeed work out for folks. So please keep an eye out for her communication as we're trying to schedule that, that board retreat for this fall. Are there any other questions or any other items I need to point out on the pending list? Thank you. All right, we will move into our consent agenda items. We have minutes and investment reports, or in financials, items one, two, and three that are available for us on the consent agenda. Are there any items that need to be pulled for separate consideration? If not, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Villarreal. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of passing the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That motion carries. Thank you. On our regular agenda items, we have a discussion and possible action related to the recommendation for professor emeritus status for Mr. Renato Ramirez, and Dr. Halcom will lead that discussion, as well as the next one for Dr. Russell Long. Dr. Halcom?
Yes, Madam Chair and esteemed regents, thank you for this opportunity and honor to present to faculty today for consideration for professor emeritus status. It truly is an honor for me to present them. I've worked with them for several years, and I place them in high regard. In your packet, you have all the documentation and recommendations from the department chair, the dean of the division, faculty council, and my recommendation following Policy B 5.33. First, I would like to present Mr. Renato Ramirez. Mr. Ramirez, could you come forward, please? And I'm going to read a resolution in recognition and profound appreciation for distinguished service by Mr. Renato Ramirez. Whereas Mr. Renato Ramirez, professor of political science, served as an exemplary educator among his peers at the college for over 29 years. During his tenure at the college, Mr. Ramirez provided excellent leadership as the chair of the Department of Social Sciences from 2014 until his retirement in 2020. Whereas Mr. Ramirez demonstrated initiative and creativity by being one of the first faculty members to deliver online content in 1997. His continued commitment to enhance his teaching and student success is best evidenced by his history of having a high 90-plus percent retention rate in his classes. Mr. Ramirez was invaluable in serving as a faculty advisor to numerous student organizations such as the Circle K Club Kiwanis Social Service Student Group, Native American Club, Student Lulac Organization, and Student Democrat Club. Whereas Mr. Ramirez served the college as a member of various search committees, the faculty council, former strategic planning committee, and subcommittee for the college's re-accreditation process through SACS. To further expand his professional expertise, Mr. Ramirez was a member of several notable organizations, including the Texas Community College Teachers Association, Texas Faculty Association, and the League of United Latin American Citizens. Now therefore be it resolved that the Delmar College's Board of Regents formally acknowledges and extends its profound appreciation for service to our college and community by recognizing Mr. Renato Ramirez with the title of Professor Emeritus on this day, September 14, 2021. Madam Chair and regents, I'm asking you to approve this resolution and grant Renato Ramirez Professor Emeritus status.
Thank you very much, Dr. Halcom. Is there, are there any questions for Dr. Halcom? Is there a motion to, thank you, Dr. Adami, to recommend Professor Emeritus status to Mr. Renato Ramirez?
I will second that.
Second by Ms. Hutchinson. Before we vote, we do want to take an opportunity to express our profound gratitude. Professors like yourself are the reason that Delmar College has and continues to be such an important part of our community. We are, we hear it time and time and time again, that our students appreciate and have such respect for those of you who stand in front of them and work alongside them every day to accomplish that magical task of teaching and learning. So thank you very much for, for all that you have done. Are there other comments from board members? All those in favor of relating the position of Professor Emeritus to Mr. Renato Ramirez, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. Congratulations, Mr. Ramirez. Would you please say a few words?
Thank you very much, and I truly am honored to receive this recognition, and I'm eternally grateful as well. I began work here in 1990. Shortly after my sister passed away, I gave up career in the Army to move back to help her through her trials and tribulations of cancer. And I was eternally grateful to Dr. Nancy Bowen and Dr. Everett Powell, the dean of arts and sciences, for giving me an opportunity to teach. And I'll always be grateful to John, and to all my friends here for continuing that support throughout my tenure here at the college. I retired last year to help my sister. My sister passed away in 1990, and she had a child who is a teacher in Victoria, and now she has cancer. And I am with her, taking care of her, just like I did her mom, you know? And it's like I've found my life mission is to help my family, you know? And I'm doing my best to make sure that she does not meet the same fate as my sister. But I'll never forget my time here at the college. It was the highlight of my life, you know? Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Ramirez, and God bless you and your, your niece, and we will, will keep you both in our prayers. Dr. Halcom?
Yes, the hardest part of doing this is we see how sorely missed these faculty are when they do retire and leave the college, but at least we can bestow upon them the Professor Emeritus award. Next, I would like to read the resolution for Dr. Russell Long. Dr. Long, could you come forward, please? So I'll read the resolution for recognition and profound appreciation for distinguished service by Dr. Russell Long. Whereas Dr. Russell Long, professor of sociology, served as an exemplary educator among his peers at the college for over 22 years. During his tenure at the college, Dr. Long provided excellent leadership as the assessment coordinator for the sociology program for nearly 10 years. Whereas Dr. Long was invaluable in serving as a faculty advisor to student organization, organizations such as the Social Justice Club, the Safe Space Club, and the Student Government Association. Dr. Long also provided dedicated service to the college as a member of the multiple search committees, numerous instructional program review committees, and standing committees such as faculty council, dual credit advisory in learning, and faculty advising. Whereas Dr. Long authored professional publications and conducted academic presentations at notable events hosted by the Southwest Social Science Association, South Texas Studies Journal, Southwestern Sociological Association, and Texas Junior College Student Government Association. To further expand his professional expertise, Dr. Long was a member of distinguished organizations, including the Population Reference Bureau, the American Association of University Professors, and the Southwestern Sociological Association. Now therefore be it resolved that the Delmar College's Board of Regents formally acknowledges and extends its profound appreciation for service to our college and community by recognizing Dr. Russell Long with the title of Professor Emeritus on this day, September 14, 2021. Madam Chair and regents, I'm asking you to approve this resolution and grant Dr. Long Professor Emeritus status.
Thank you very much, Dr. Halcom. Are there any questions for Dr. Halcom? Is there a motion to, to bestow on Dr. Russell Long this status of Professor Emeritus? Thank you, Ms. Avery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Villarreal. Again, Dr. Long, on behalf of the Board of Regents, we thank you for your service to the college, but more importantly, to our students. Each and every student that you have touched, I know, has, has benefited greatly from your experience and your expertise, as evidenced by the, the comments and, and the nomination for, for you for this position. So it's with deep respect and gratitude that we, we are in front of you today. We get to make this formal decision, but we know that, that the lifelong work is the basis for this decision, and so we just get to acknowledge that. All those in favor of the motion to present Professor Emeritus status to Dr. Russell Long, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. The motion passes unanimously. Dr. Long, please let us hear from you.
I would have to speak to the motion.
Oh, I can't believe that. You stood in front of a classroom for that long, and you
That's okay.
What an outstanding example of the, the faculty excellence at Delmar College. Thank you for bringing those forward, Dr. Halcom, and again, congratulations to both Mr. Ramirez and to Dr. Long. Next item on the agenda is our review and possible action relating to the revision of the board bylaws. Regent Avery?
Thank you, Chairwoman. I'll remove my mask for this, and I'm going to ask for some help from our general counsel as well. I, I can't think of a better segue than, you know, to hear about the exemplary service that we have from faculty here, and how it reminds me and us as board members that we need to make sure that we are worthy of the trust that the faculty and staff put in us. And one of the ways we can do that is to hold ourselves to very high standards, and, and I think we do that, and I appreciate this board's support in making sure we continue to do that, and perhaps even at a greater level. To refresh your memory, at our last meeting, we saw the recommendations from that hawke bylaws committee, had some good discussion about those recommendations. There were a couple of areas that we did feel like we needed just a little, little bit of tweaking, and so the committee did meet one more time, made a few adjustments, which we have brought to you today, particularly around some language, and I am going to ask Mr. Rivera to guide us through those changes. And then I'd like us to talk just a little bit more about the proposal about a financial disclosure statement, because we did have a little conversation about that, needed, need a little bit more input from the board on that item in particular. So, Mr. Rivera, I'll turn it over to you, if you don't mind.
Thank you, thank you, Regent Avery. And, regents, what you have in, in the memo that was included with your board packet are three different provisions that you felt required additional review by the committee, and so the committee did meet on August 25th and went over these, and what you see in the proposed, when it says current, that's current draft, and so the proposed is the proposed redraft for your consideration with what's been added in yellow. So you'll see in the first one, there was a concern that there would be no way to communicate with or to answer questions from, general questions during a bidding process, and so what's been added is that the board may designate a board member or other representative to provide information or answer questions from the public about the process. And that'll be done on an ad hoc basis. Every time you have a process set up, you'll decide what, what's, what fits the, what fits the situation and what would be appropriate. So I don't know if you want to take up, take these up one at a time, or just go through them, or? or...
I'd recommend that we take them one at a time, just to see if there's any concerns about that additional language.
Regents, any questions about that particular...
I'm just wondering if there would be a default to the board chair or another board member as designated to answer questions, to provide information. Would it be appropriate for that to default to the board chair so that we wouldn't have to make that determination every time but the board chair or another designee to provide information or answer questions? Would that be acceptable?
I'm certainly comfortable with that.
Okay.
Okay, so then F will be modified to say the board chair? Or other designee?
I just think that saves you from having to do it every time we have a process.
We'll provide information or answer questions from the public about the process. So, that'll be, if you want to, again, vote on these one at a time, or just when we're done?
Just do that when we're done.
Okay.
Yeah. If there's general consensus about an amendment or any changes, then we'll do it all at the time.
Because we have not voted on the whole draft either.
That's right. That's correct.
We should take it all as a whole.
Next was, and these are all, I should say, for the public record, under Section 2, the Statement of Conduct and Ethics that's in your board bylaws, the next has to do with subpart U, and you'll see that it went from something that was maybe a little clunky and went in a couple of directions and just tightened up, to now read refrain from accepting or soliciting any gift, favor, or service that might influence or appear to influence a regent in the performance of official duties. I think you'll all agree that that's much cleaner, it makes sense, and I see from nodding heads that everybody seems to think that that's appropriate. Any questions? The next specific provision that was looked at was W, and this actually prompted quite a bit of conversation amongst you all. Last time we went back and the committee went back and looked at it, and it now has this proposal after even much more deliberation amongst the committee. They felt comfortable bringing this to you. Reads as follows: Endeavor to avoid for a period of one year after leaving office both the possibility of conflict of interest and the appearance of such conflict that would arise if the former regent takes employment or enters into a business relationship with any vendor, contractor, company, or other individual or entity in a business relationship with the college. I want to point out a couple of things. I think the concern there was, so what, does this mean that you can't work after you leave the board for somebody that's in a business relationship with the college? It does not. This is to begin with aspirational, and you're asking, each of you would be asking the other of you to subscribe to this, to agree in principle and commit yourself to conducting yourself this way. Let me just throw out a couple of hypotheticals. Does this mean that you, after, for a year after you... And this is, by the way, based on a, I mean, it's a recognized conflict, just generally speaking. Once you get off, you need to be careful about how you associate after that so that you don't raise questions about what you did while you were in the board. So, let's say that a year before, you know, you leave the board, there's a highly competitive process to select a contractor that is selected, you make the deciding vote on that, and then you have, you leave the board, and then six months later, you end up on the payroll of the board. I'm using a very extreme example that will likely never come up, but that's what that's intended to cover, is that, you know, you're there and you're, but you took a vote on it, and would that raise a question? It might, probably, raise an eyebrow. On the other hand, let's say you go to work for someone that happens to be in a business relationship with the college, and you never took any vote or anything that benefited the company, then that's probably not going to raise a question. Those are sort of the two extreme examples that this was intended to cover, and so it's submitted for your question, conversation, discussion.
And the definition of business relationship would be, I guess that's the only piece of this, is that that's a pretty broad statement. Is a business relationship someone who is a donor? Is it someone who is in a contract, even contractual, if there's contracts with companies that buy services from the college versus the college is buying services from them? That is a business relationship. And so, is that, there are a number of entities out there who buy training services from Delmar College, and I don't think that's what you mean, but that's, but by using the word "business relationship," so that begs, I know that's not what you're intending, but that begs a future entity to look at. What do you mean by "business relationship"?
I understand that that might be a business relationship, but not one that would create the possibility of a conflict of interest.
Okay.
That's the distinction.
Okay.
So, you can still shop at those, with those vendors, so to speak, but if it's not in a way that would be compromising, that's the other part of it. That's the way I would...
All right.
Good question, but there were, I didn't bring you all the iterations that the poor committee had to suffer through. I mean, they really, I want to commend the committee for spending a lot of time looking at this, and as Regent Hutchison pointed out, that's really the, it's not, well, is this a business relationship, or it's, is it going to give off something that appears to be a conflict of interest? And that's the concern that you're trying to address here.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions, Regents, on that? Then, what's been attached, let me be very clear, the personal disclosure statement that you see attached is not, was not, there wasn't consent, I think it's fair to say there was not consensus amongst the committee members that this was the way to go. This is what I had redrafted and brought to the committee for their consideration, so you're in essence seeing what, you know, was prepared and proposed to them, and it included actually something that Regent Bennett had pointed out, you know, about something that might be useful to identify, and that's indebtedness, or those financial obligations like that. But at the end, at the end of the day, I think, I think the committee felt like if they couldn't come to a consensus on it, then it was probably something that needed to come back to the board to have all of you consider and look at. Is that fair, Regent Averett?
I think that is fair. I think part of it truly was we ran out of time because we had spent so much time on the other changes, and so we didn't have a full conversation about this. I think it is fair to say that the committee does support some form of a personal disclosure statement, with this probably being the minimum. What we did briefly consider that Mr. Rivera brought to us was what is required of certain state boards, which is extensive, as many of you have seen in other capacities. I even questioned, well, why not just adopt that, even though it's not required by law for us to abide by? But I also felt like that went, that I might have been overstepping a little bit. That wasn't specifically what we talked about in terms of this committee, so I wanted to come back to you all as a board to talk about, you know, what do we want on a personal disclosure statement? Are we comfortable with a personal disclosure statement? Does this go far enough? Or do we want to explore the possibility of doing something stronger or more aspirational, even though we're not required to? And I just didn't have a really good sense of what the board's will was on that.
So, considering that this is the first step in going above and beyond what is required, I think these three areas, number one and three specifically, address the potential for financial disclosure. Number two is really about your associations that are non-financial, but that might impact your decision-making. So, I think this is, again, for our first foray into it, we can sit with it for a couple of years and see if there tend to be any questions or concerns that come out of it, and if so, then future boards can look at amendments to it as well. So, I'm kind of of the thought that this is pretty comprehensive, both financially and from an association standpoint. And future boards can always change it.
Sure. I don't disagree. I mean, it's not written in stone forever, so...
Right. Other comments, questions, thoughts?
I guess my first thought is, I'm thinking of the highest level, highest functioning board. What do they do? What type of disclosure do those boards have for their Regents or for their members? And should we aspire to that? So, I think that was my first thought, and I don't know the answer to that. I don't know what other really high-functioning, transparent, you know, effective boards do in this area.
None that I'm aware of in Texas, community college boards. When you're looking at your counterparts, again, within the state, as Regent Averett mentioned, I mean, there's a very extensive, and some would say maybe even invasive, 23, 24-page disclosure statement that's required, that really does go into substantial detail. But you're not required to comply with that, and so other than that, I'm not aware of anything else, Regent Villarreal, that would require you to do it. So, in some sense, you're going beyond what's required in doing at least this.
And it is a disclosure statement. We are all elected officials, and ultimately, those are appointed officials, you know, when you're talking about state boards, those are appointed, and so there's a different way that somebody comes to this position. Yes, some of you have been appointed to the board, but it is ultimately an elected board. And so, you are already answering to the voting public, and the public is voting you into a position. So, from a disclosure standpoint, you're disclosing any potential campaign contributions already following the law for that. This is going above and beyond in terms of disclosing additional potential relationships with, again, financial and otherwise. So, I think there is a comparison to be made, probably not with state boards, but probably with other elected boards. And again, I think this is a good step in the right direction for us. Is it all that, is it all that it could be? No, but it's a good, I think it's a good step.
I think the other thing is you need to evaluate and measure it against what you're intending to capture. I mean, how many times are you, on a regular basis, having to vote on contracts? And, you know, not that frequently, right, as opposed to other boards where those things come up quite a bit? You know, I'm not worried about lobbyists who appear in front of you on a regular basis. So, I think it's an attempt at a balance to where you're taking a step forward. I think that was the committee's thought, that you wanted to do something, as Regent Averett said, but not adopt something that was too onerous. As I've told you before, one of the other general principles when it comes to ethical disclosures by board members, just one of the general principles is you're not intended to necessarily be completely open books. It's just what's important and what's essential and what will help the public, and what will help keep the confidence with the public of what you're doing.
I like the idea that it just discloses a board and a liability and a connection, and if it ever came up, that that looked like it would be, then we could probe further and say, what is this relationship? I mean, if somebody felt like it was important, then we could get details without having to bear all of that when it may never be relevant.
Right.
And to clarify, I believe it was the will of the committee that if this personal disclosure statement is adopted, that it would be posted on our website where the campaign finance reports are posted, and any other things that we may sign, any other disclosure statements.
Good point, Regent. This will not absolve you of having to identify a conflict of interest in filing that under state law, so those, you know, you don't file this and then say, come see if I've got a conflict. That's still your responsibility, so...
Is it your intent that this be done annually in January? This be done, because you have a filing year? I didn't know what your filing year, I forgot what that was in the original document.
I'd have to, yeah. I defer to Mr. Rivera, because I know we had some language in the original draft about the timing. It was within a certain amount of time if you were appointed, and then annually, I believe...
I think it was within six months.
Of election or appointment?
Right. Or three months?
Better than that, but we did take into account that if someone was appointed, they didn't get to wait, you know, an extra year or something.
Right. Okay. Other questions for, comments for the committee? Yes, sir?
Just a general comment. I think this is a great step in the right direction. I think it's something that we need to have. I think also, as you mentioned, you're trying to be transparent. As a public servant, you're trying to be transparent, but it also holds you accountable so that when something comes up that could be considered a conflict, knowing what you file, what you presented to folks, is what your interests are, you have, you know, you got an obligation, you need to step off and say, I've got a conflict I cannot partake in this discussion, and I think that's necessary for public service. I really do. Thank you.
So, Mr. Rivera, what is the appropriate next step? I mean, are we prepared now to vote on our recommendations as a whole at this meeting?
I believe so. Unless there were any other questions about any of the other provisions which we went over in detail at the last board meeting? As I understood where you were, you had the three items that you wanted further review and work on, we've gone through that, and then this personal disclosure statement, and so it would be a matter of a motion, adopting all of the revisions to the bylaws as presented by the ad hoc committee meeting last month and today?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make that motion, please.
Thank you, Ms. Averett. Is there a second to that motion?
No, seconded.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchison. So, in clarification, the full document was presented to us at our last meeting. These changes, we are incorporating, the changes highlighted in yellow in the minor wording change for letter U that we discussed today.
Letter F?
Excuse me. Letter F, I apologize. Put my glasses on so I can see what I'm doing here. And as part of that adoption is included the personal disclosure statement that we reviewed today as well. Any questions about the document as a whole? Any questions about the process? I think this is worthy of a record vote, so all those in favor of adoption of the revisions to our board bylaws as presented, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Regent Averett and Hutchison, and we'll thank Dr. Turner when we see her again for your work on this. I know that y'all have spent a significant amount of time in the last several months doing this, and we certainly appreciate the dedication and the hard work. If there are wrap-up items, do you need, does the committee need to continue to function with any wrap-up items?
Regent Averett mentioned to you last time that we needed to make sure that we could harmonize these with the policies, and so the committee, if authorized by the board, would then take that up in short order and get that work done here as expeditiously as possible. But in terms of the bylaws, that's done.
Okay. I'm okay with that if you are, yeah. Let us know when you are, when you finish that work, bring that back, or just incorporate that into the work that Ms. McDonald is doing, and let us know when we can officially disband that committee, but I'll call, I'll leave that up to you and Mr. Rivera. All right. Thank you all again for that work. Mr. Strabos, let's talk about Heritage Hall demolition.
Delmar College Purchasing and Business Services Department has advertised for Heritage Hall demolition. The bid tabulation information is being passed around. This was a low bid project, and we recommend awards to the low bidder. As listed there, you have the valuation committee, and this bidder is qualified and can perform this work. Heritage Hall demolition is a 2014 bond project. That is the bond funding source for the project. Janak and Associates prepared the construction documents, and this will become a stationery for the memorial hall, memorial classroom building renovation. Questions?
What is the timing?
Well, ideally, we complete all the asbestos abatement. We're ready to start this. They'll have to do some certain notifications, but we're ready to start this probably October 1st kind of timeframe and take through the... and take through the end of the calendar year to get this completed.
Any other questions for Mr. Strabos? Is there a motion to adopt the recommendation as presented by staff? Thank you, Dr. Adami, second. Second, Dr. Villarreal. Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Strabos. Board members, we do have opportunity to go into closed session. We are going to adjourn to the adjacent room, but because it doesn't have a door on it, we still have to clear the room. So please allow us to go into closed session under Texas Government Code 551.071 regarding pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer with possible discussion, action, and open session in the seeking of legal advice from counsel on pending legal or contemplated matters or claims with possible discussion, action, and open session. The time is 2:30 PM. Thank you. The board has returned from closed session at 2:54 PM. We do not have any action coming out of closed session. Board members, we'll look at our calendar for the upcoming month. There are several of us that are attending the State Community College Association of Texas Trustee, Board of Trustees Institute this week in Austin. Our next board meeting is going to be October 5th. We moved that up a week because there are also several board members who are attending our national conference in San Diego. And Tuesday, our regular meeting date is a potential travel date for those individuals. In November, our regular meeting date of November 9th will stand. We are holding a potential opportunity for our board retreat, planning retreat, for the 17th, 18th, and 19th, and that schedule has been discussed with you. We will confirm that. I don't know if that's confirmed or not, but we will confirm that shortly. And that leads us into our December meeting. We'll be at our regular meeting time. At this point in time, we do not have a January meeting planned. We always try to, because of the way the holiday works and staff trying to put together an agenda during that holiday break, we try to skip the January meeting if at all possible. If necessary, we will have a special called meeting if staff determines that that is necessary. But just for those of you, for your planning calendars, we do not plan on a January meeting. Anything else for the calendar that I missed?
Remind them.
All right. If there's nothing else to come before the board, we are adjourned at 2:55 PM.